Okay, it is 5:00 and we'll call the meeting for June the 10th, 2013, to order and ask the clerk to please call her off.
Mr. Roach, Mr. Haynes.
Here.
Mr. Bowers.
Here.
Mr. Henn.
Here.
Mayor May.
Here. We do have a quorum present and we will discuss some items in this location and for anyone who got here late, if you came to speak on the fairness issue, we are going to move that discussion to the Kentucky History Center. And the Kentucky History Center is located on Broadway. We do have maps available for those that don't know how to get there. I think everybody here that I'm seeing in the audience, for the most part, knows how to get there. And just when we get to the History Center, go into the Anne Street side of the building and immediately upon entering the building, you'll see the signs for the large meeting room, which will direct people to the left. So at this point, if people have any items under citizen comments other than the fairness ordinance, we will take citizen comments and then after we deal with some other agenda items here, we will move to the Kentucky History Center and do the fairness ordinance discussion because there were close to 100 and over 100 people in the hallways and in the room a few minutes ago, so we're going to move to the History Center. And we already pre-arranged that as a backup plan in case we did have more than what the room could accommodate. So we appreciate everyone's patience and understanding. And with that, does anyone here have any citizen comments on any items that are not related to fairness? Okay. The next item would be discussion of the tentative agenda and we do have some staff presentations to be made. So does anyone have any agenda item discussions that we need to address before we move forward?
We're going to address them in order, correct?
You mean under discussion items? I'm just talking about just-
You're asking about agenda items, aren't we going to discuss those when we get to-
I'm sorry, I was talking about the, let me rephrase. When it says a tentative agenda, the-
The 24th.
The 24th.
Oh, okay.
If not, then I, city manager reports and staff reports. I know that there might be one staff report and there may be some items that the staff would like added to the June 24th meeting. And if that's the case, rather than have the lengthy reports, we're going to ask the commission's indulgence to say if staff has any items that they would like to add to the agenda. If you could just raise your hand so I'll know how many, we're not going to ask you to come forward, but how many staff folks in the digital departments need to add something to the agenda for June 24th? Three, four. Okay. So I'm going to let the city manager have your items submitted to the city manager and if the commission doesn't object, at the meeting, we will say it's okay for the city manager to send those agenda items to us in his report.
To the update.
In the update? Is that okay? An interest of Tom?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that will allow those items to be added to the agenda and we will have addressed it through a memo from city manager. Okay.
Are any of those going to be controversial in terms of like discussion might slow it up, do you think?
Do you know, any of the items that you all are going to add to the agenda would be anything that would require large appropriations or discussion?
Okay.
Mr. Bradley, for example, in public works has three pieces of equipment he'd like to buy out of this year's budget as opposed to next year's. We have some significant savings within that department. That's one of the items. Mr. Donahue, any, quickly?
First mail actions, the code of turnover.
Okay. Mr. Parrish?
Just a, not change organs, but an addition to the co-spring string restoration. It was, it's no fiscal impact to the city, it's all fish and wildlife. We just need to do that. We're handling the procurement forms, so it's not really affecting the city at all.
And Mr. Moore?
A couple of items. One is I want authorization to update an appraisal of the property out on Leonard Wood Drive and then, and that has a cost that's going to be less than, less than about $3,000. And then the other is an individual that purchased a lot in the Carpenter Farm would like to sell it back to the city pursuant to the right of first refusal and I need to know whether or not the commission wishes to purchase it. So I'll put together a letter with the details and provide it to Tim.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all. I would like to recognize a former member of our city commission, Sally Stumbo is here with us. Always glad to have former members here and we respect your service that you gave to the community and continue to do, so it's always good to see you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll add those agenda items for June 24th. And let's see, any commissioners have any old business that you would like to address? There's nothing on the agenda, but if you have something. Okay. What about any new business? Commissioner Henn?
I do have two pieces of new business. One is similar kind of old business, but I'm bringing it up under new because it's the consideration of the arborist position. Someone retired last year and we were told that we're going to keep that position open for a year. I've had some citizens get in touch with me, making sure that we were going to fill that position again, just making sure that was still included within the budget for that position of the year.
It is.
Okay. And then my other one, I had sent an email and I have talked to the city manager regarding this. I just like to make everything open and transparent as I can. Under our policies and procedures under 2.1, when it comes to internal job postings that the city, it's the policy of the city to encourage all employees to seek career advancement within the city. However, I'm asking to see if a subsection of that, subsection F, states that for purposes in this section, the term current employee is defined as a full-time confirmed employee. That we do have several part-time employees that do look to advance their career within the city and just seeing if we could change that to make sure that current employees do include our part-time staff as well when it comes to internal job postings.
Anyone object to Commissioner Henn's request to make that change?
No objections.
No objection? Okay, so we'll say, we'll order that. Do we need to vote on that, Mr. City Attorney? Or can we just do it by voice? Vote at the next meeting?
This would be a change to the order or-
Policies and procedures. Two point, you said 2.1?
2.1. Section A, number one, it states as internal job postings, but just changing, it would be F, number one, making the term a current employee. Right now, it's currently defined as any full-time confirmed employee, changing that to any employee.
The, as long as there's not a conflict with the ordinance, it could certainly be done by, vote on an order at the next city commission meeting.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, any other new business items? If not, discussion items, do you want me to go, can I order here?
Can I just skip these and go to the other? Yes. You can almost skip these and these can be discussed at the next location, correct? They're on the agenda? After the-
Yeah, of course.
Somebody got a PowerPoint presentation, right?
Want to just do the PowerPoint and move over?
Okay, yes, the PowerPoint.
Who's going to do, who's going to do the presentation?
They're not here.
They're not here.
They're not here.
Okay. Well, what about Gary?
We can hold on Gary's till July.
Okay. So the one on the reestablishment of the Second Street Formas Code Task Force will be passed over till July?
Yes.
Does anyone object to that? Okay, if no objection, then we'll move that to the July discussion items. And the other item on the bid for the third-party downtown parking enforcement.
If I may, Your Honor. I spoke a bit with Mark Wilhoit and I also spoke with Steve Dawson. Both have indicated that we are starting that process for bidding that service. Okay?
Not in favor.
Oh, yeah, because we haven't authorized that yet.
I'm not in favor.
So were you just talking-
We were not going to start, I should say, we were not going to start that process until fall.
The garage lease expires.
I think the commission probably wants to discuss this before we move on that, so if you all don't mind to hold up until the commission has a chance.
Chief Wilhoit, Your Honor?
Go ahead. Sorry, Chief.
If I may, in the meantime, whether we decide to do it or not to do it, we're going to go ahead and hire some extra parking enforcement officers and be beefed up and ready to go by the time the judicial center opens up downtown because that's going to be a, parking will be at a premium and there will be a lot of folks that need to be directed to the garages. So by the time we get to the point where we can discuss bids or even if we want to outsource the parking enforcement, there's going to be several months, so, you know, we're going to be taking care of it until whatever decision is made by this board.
Okay. I think there might have been some misunderstanding on the direction according to our staff, maybe thought that-
Whether we want to outsource or not.
Right. I think that might have been so-
Sure. And that was one of the goals that was discussed early on, so it was just, really, we're still in the exploratory process because once we looked into it, we did think that we needed to tie it to the garage lease, which expires in February, so there wouldn't be anything before this board until late in the fall, so we can put that discussion off.
Wow. Thank you, Chief. Thank you for thinking ahead.
Mayor, I would just suggest that we not like put the discussion off very long in case there is, I mean, I think maybe next month.
Okay, so you only want to put that on for July?
I think we need to discuss earlier than later.
We'll put it on for July and if they're not ready, we'll just pass it over and if we're ready, have a discussion. Is that okay?
Well, I'm ready for a discussion whenever.
Sooner than later. Let's not put it off till October and November.
Okay, we'll put it back on in July.
Okay.
And then if there's not support at the work session, we just won't even, we'll take it off? It won't be on the July agenda, how about that? We'll just say it's on the work session agenda only.
Work session?
Is that okay?
July work session? And the task force is going to the July work session as well?
Yes, ma'am. And the Green Vision MOU, did you say we're going to skip over that too?
Green Vision, there. Mr. Scow, if you want to give a brief report.
Basically, excuse me, you have, should have in front of you a copy of the memorandum of understanding and a copy of proposed memorandum of understanding and proposed bylaws. The city attorney has reviewed these and has a number of comments. I guess the biggest issue that we have is before we spend a tremendous amount of time hammering through these because there are a number of bodies involved and I can see this process taking some time because everybody's going to get comments and then it's going to go back out and there's going to be comments on everybody's comments. We just want to make sure there's still an interest by the city commission to proceed with that. Right now, and I don't want to necessarily put words in Rob's mouth, of course, he'll probably claim I do it all the time anyway, but the MOU is very vague. Rob, is there anything specific you'd like to add to that as far as what you determined in your initial reviews?
Well, the MOU has, from its original drafting, has appeared to change both focus and it is still pretty vague on exactly what the parties are being required to do. And we would certainly want to make that document tighter and more specific before the city enters into something that's somewhat vague and ambiguous because certainly the city wants to know what it's agreeing to.
Okay, and the city manager's for me that he believes that there can be a meeting of all of the parties by the end of the month and can have a report for us?
That's our goal, yes.
Any objections by the commission?
No.
Okay. All right.
Can we just get a statement, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Sure.
Regarding, what is it that we're really going to get out of this, Green Vision MOU? What are they going to provide for our city? What do we get out of this if we go into this agreement? What are we getting?
That's been a lot of the debate of the members of the commission.
Right.
Basically, the ultimate goal is to get a sustainability plan for the city of Frankfurt. That's the ultimate goal. What it boils down to is there's a lot of discussion amongst the members of the group of how do we, how do we reach that consensus on what are the, what is the plan going to look like?
And who pays how much and who gets so much of it?
That's a big issue, yes. Absolutely. The, basically, the memorandum of understanding is for, and I don't know, at one point, there was a breakdown of who was going to pay what. That number has changed a little bit, but the cost for us to keep Green Vision, who's our current moderator, is going to be $60,000 a year. Right now, the last number, unless Tom's heard something different than I have, they're looking for the city to pay $20,000 of that $60,000. Now, on top of that, the development of the sustainability plan is estimated to cost about $100, maybe $120,000. Somebody's got to pay that fee too. And right now, they're looking at the city to pay basically one-third of the cost of the moderator. I would assume, and I hate to make assumptions, but I would assume that they would be looking at the city to pay roughly a third of the cost of the development of the sustainability plan. So you're probably looking at an initial investment of about $20,000 to start the program and then somewhere along the way, probably another $40,000 to $60,000 for the development of the plan. Then you've got implementation of the plan, which we don't even have a clue at this point what kind of dollars we're talking about.
So with that in mind, in the discussions we had on our previous commissions, I'm sorry for the last, for Commissioner Bowers and Commissioner Haynes were part of the discussion, when it came down to trying to hire a sustainability coordinator, which we had budgeted for, it was, I think, $60,000 for their salary, not including benefits, is that correct, Mayor May?
It was in that range.
Which seems to almost be the same amount as joining a group of people with the Green Vision. Is that math correct?
It's $60,000, right?
Well, our share could be is in the $15,000 to $20,000 of that total 60. There would be five or six groups that would share in that cost. That's been the proposal on the table.
Right.
Yet to be discussed.
Right. The last number I heard is, was for us to do 20, but again, you know, nobody's made that commitment on our part and we haven't agreed to that number. That's the number that's been thrown out and obviously that's part of those long-term discussions that still need to come up is because there are six, yeah, there's six entities that make up the Green Vision Commission.
I've got Tony on the phone.
But some of them are not necessarily, I think, financially able to fund as much as some people think the city can.
Nicely put.
So you all okay with letting the city manager and Mr. Scow and other departments and parties get together and talk about the process and then report back to us after the end of June?
That sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for answering questions.
Do you want to do the goals and implementation schedule?
I would only ask, we provided you a copy today, we provided them in the past. If there are any questions, any comments, we can either try and address them or you can get those to me over the next few days, but the staff has put together their implementation plan of the goals established earlier by the commission.
Well, I think the commission is happy to see those, just as a, sort of as a performance, I mean, evaluation of the performance, just as a, an update to where we are. Any discussion on that or you just want to-
I very much enjoyed reading the updates to see where they're placing the goals. I've not had a chance to actually make any recommendations to it.
If you have any, you can either get them to me in a meeting format or individually and we'll do our best to address them.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, interrupt for just a second. I've got Tony Scholler on the line and Tony said that if the commission would like him to come on over here to give the Athletic Aquatic Center and Sports Complex presentation, they can do that because he's got it on a thumb drive, or if you would prefer that he give it over at the History Center, that's where he is now. So it's purely at the commission's discretion.
I'd rather get as much done here as possible than to go over there because it could be rather lengthy once we get over there.
Oh, no, I think it'd be good for all those community members to hear the presentation.
Are they charging us for the presentation? Does the History Center have a PowerPoint? I don't think they have it set up. I don't know that the History Center has, we didn't request a LCD projector or a laptop or anything for the meeting at the History Center, so I don't know if they have the equipment set up.
Tony said he could be right over.
Okay, right over.
Right over.
Otherwise, we may not be able to see a presentation over there.
He might come in on over.
Could he get word to the group that we will be delayed or can you get word to your group that we will be delayed?
Okay. See you in three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Bye. He's on the way, Mayor. Thank you. I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay. Do you all want to take a recess while we're waiting for him? Otherwise, we'll sit here with him. No, do you have something to talk about?
We could talk about this parking thing right now. I know Mr. Roach isn't here, but we could maybe decide now if we're even going to be pursuing it in July. I don't want to privatize that, is my point. And I guess if it's, if we've got a 2-2 situation, we'd have to bring it back in July, but we could like put this issue to rest tonight if we've got a few minutes to do that.
Or we can get some questions answered and have it provided to us in July.
Correct.
Okay.
Good to just answer.
They're ready?
Sure. They want to discuss.
Do you want to discuss it or do we need the chief to discuss?
Either one.
Who's going to discuss it on the agenda?
Well, I think the chief and/or Finance Director Dawson were going to, they were working on the potential bid process and I did misspeak. We were not going to start that till later on in the fall because of the February termination tests.
The only thing that we could present tonight is just an overall discussion. I mean, there's no nuts and bolts to it. It was a desire by a member of this commission and something that we were exploring and we're continuing to do it. If the board doesn't want us to continue, then that's certainly, certainly up to them. It will save us a lot of lifetime, but-
I do remember in the planning session, Commissioner Roach talked about exploring all the possible ways to privatize, so I feel like that he would want to go down that road, but I don't want to go down that road and I don't know how the other two commissioners feel or the mayor feels, but there's no point in wasting anybody's time if there's not three people that want to go that way.
When looking at Roach's email, he said he thinks we should consider a bid process for third-party downtown parking enforcement. And I think that's what we had on the agenda, so I was hoping to hear more about that. Is that the direction you're talking about not going down?
That's the direction, talk about not going down.
Okay, so that's where you're talking about 2-2. What's the other option?
Continue the way we're doing now. If employees, so the police department enforcing the downtown parking. And when I say employees, part-time employees that are employed to mark tires and mark parking tickets.
And what's the drawbacks of doing, continuing that route?
We can continue that. We're doing that as, as we speak. There's no rush on this, quite frankly. You know, it's a desire, at least one member of the board has stated in the goals.
That's where I got confused. I think that's where the confusion was because it was, I think, we were thinking we would have it as a goal to discuss it and it probably, I think it got communicated to staff that it was a goal that the commission wanted done, is what happened, so sorry for that.
Right, it was, it was kind of low-hanging fruit on the goals. It was an easy one to look into. It was something that, like I said, the garage lease is going to be up soon, so it was just, if that is something that we were to explore now would be a good time to do it. If not, we can continue doing business the way we're doing it and no harm, no foul.
Well, Mayor, if we could just get a, I think you heard from Commissioner Henn tonight, I guess it depends on what the two, where the two of you stand, or maybe you're not ready to think about that yet, but if we don't have three people that want to go down that road, though, I think we could just kill it right here.
Well, can I say, is there three that want to go down that road?
Well, there's two that don't.
I mean, I don't hear any-
The other's one that does.
We know one, so I think there's, is there just one that really wants to go? It sounded like there's just one that wants to do it, so I think we'll just-
I don't matter, doing like what it's doing.
Okay. We'll just take it off the table.
Very good.
That was efficient usage of our time. Thanks for the suggestion, Commissioner Bowers and for the other commissioners for chiming in.
Good job, we scratched that off. You've got Jim, Jim Parrish.
Oh, okay. While we're in this little recess, I just want to inform you on a couple of things. You had asked the Parks Board, I believe back in April, to come back with a response to the Athletic Complex or whatever, and they've been working, they've heard the presentation from Swim Play Frankfurt, they've heard the presentation from John Arnett, Frankfurt Tennis Association. They've also met with Branstad or Carroll, our consultants that did the master plan 10 years ago and are formulating a, they've been working really hard and listening to people and formulating an opinion. They were scheduled to come back this month, but once Swim Play Frankfurt was put on the agenda, they didn't, and also with budget, didn't know how budget was going to come. So they've asked if they can extend to whatever you think July or August.
Yeah.
Whatever thinks you're, think maybe your schedule is better for with their recommendation.
Do you asking us for either July or August or extending it till July or August based on what the Parks Board can?
Whichever you prefer, July or August.
Is there a preference from the commission?
I say let's go, let's go August, just make sure everyone has enough time to make up their mind, get it as informed as they can and then come back with us with the-
Okay. But they have heard all the presentations and want to let you in. Also, on a second note, the audio group is here for the shelter presentation Wednesday night. Hope everyone can come, it's pretty impressive. Tents were going up today and they're playing softball at Capital View tomorrow night just for their people and then the big event is Wednesday evening. They won't reveal who the entertainment is, so that's the big buzz around Frankfurt, so. But it's from six to nine and the shelter is absolutely, the pavilion's gorgeous and they're here and in full swing at the Capital Plaza Hotel, so please come out. And Bob Stewart, the new Secretary of Tourism is going to be there to say a few words.
Great. Okay. So if there's no objection, then we'll let the Parks Board come back with the recommendation in August?
Yes.
Is that okay with the majority of the board?
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I see that Mr. Scholler has arrived and-
Mayor, there's a citizen that came in like that wanted to say something.
Okay, go ahead. Sure. Sure.
It's Richard. He's my crossing guard.
That's okay. And just for the record, just so the city clerk is just taking your name, and you don't have to put your address?
Oh, I just find Richard Sanford. I come in late December, early January, and asked about my curb on Myrtle. I just wanted to thank you all for handling it.
Oh, okay, good.
Because it turned out great. All my customers like it, so...
Good.
Good job. I just wanted to thank you all.
Thank you.
I didn't want to sit through the whole thing for you.
That's okay. Sure, call any time. Thank you so much. Thank you for your service. Tony Scholler and Brad Thomas to discuss or make a presentation about a sports complex. Thank you all for being with us, and we appreciate your flexibility on...
No problem.
I didn't... I don't think we had... I don't think there's a presentation or equipment at the History Center. We didn't ask for anything.
They've got power plants, which...
They've had it? Wow!
Yeah, they've got one. Keith Jackson. I believe not. He's got it all set up.
Okay. Guess I'll pay for that?
I appreciate your interest. This is all...
Do we need to get authorization to pay that? Yeah, just do it later. Should we do it now?
We'll have to come vote.
I know you're all going to get this one.
Oh, it's okay. Take your time, because I'm discussing a legal issue anyway with the city attorney asking questions.
Do you consent to this? If you can give the consensus, you can fight next time.
Can we just do consensus?
Okay. I want to ask while they're setting up, just because due to the number of emails and phone calls that are received over the last few days, I had talked with our city manager this morning about a contingency plan to move to the History Center if need be, and since we arrived at... And at 4:30, the room was already overflowed, and at 4:45, it was even more packed. We'd already set up a contingency with the History Center to contract with them to use their space. So if there's no objection, we can... We don't vote... If there's consensus and no one disagrees with that, we can authorize that this contract be signed with them so that we can use the facility and pay them. Is there any objection to that? We really didn't have any choice other... It would have been uncomfortable for our constituents. Okay. Thank you.
And all this technology, and we're hurried and wait.
Look, the little circle will go round and round.
Maybe you can tell us about tips while you're...
Since I heard you had a picture down there. I wish I'd known they had equipment down there.
Yeah, we didn't know.
Well, we still could, couldn't we? They have equipment down there. Maybe we want all the citizens to see this.
If y'all want to.
It would be good for them to see this.
Okay. Now, it seems like the commission now hearing that they would ask that since there is equipment set up, that you saw it, and it is functional, then we can move over there, and then everybody else can see it too.
I will say that they're going to be focused on...
You're gathering the right...
Right.
Yeah, they are.
Is that the commission? Focus on another issue.
The people who I saw over there that know me said, "Don't take time. Just get off to... Do what you've got to do."
You need me on the microphone? Tony, you want to be the driver?
So they're not interested in any other issue?
You can take that one and move it down there.
So they're not interested in any other issue that affects our large city on such a large scale?
Not interested.
Not today.
Amazing, though.
The reason why I'm asking Tony to drive is the fact that I like to walk around and use my hands. I guess I missed my calling. I should have been a teacher, but I just didn't have the guts to be the teacher. So I ended up working on projects like this. And what we are here to talk about today is... The city has discussed this for many years. This isn't something new to the world, but what we do is bring to you as a new perspective. And we want to talk about Swim Play Frankfurt, quality of life project for Frankfurt, Franklin County. Tony, what hit the next slide? Oops. Oh, say there, I left it for him. We all know Frankfurt, Franklin County, right?
I hope so.
Always had that river that runs through it, right? Go ahead, Tony. Talk about our current population. We're going to do a little bit of research on our U.S. Census track information. When we start talking about county population, if we look at our contiguous counties, we notice that Franklin County is the largest at 49,285. This is off the latest Census track data. And we've got some that are coming up closer to us at Shelby and Scott. Go ahead, Tony. We start looking at our trends. I'm kind of a numbers geek. This is something that I'm interested in, and hopefully you all are too. When we start looking at the population changes for Frankfurt, we notice from 1980 to 2010, there's really not been that much growth. When we start looking at the counties, there's been a little bit more growth, but still, it's not keeping up with what our neighbors are doing. Go ahead, Tony. One thing that we want to point out is, as you see these maps going forward, I want to show you the sports facilities that these communities have that are growing. And I just wanted to point out to Clear Creek and Shelby, Falling Springs and Woodford, the Pavilion, and Suffolletta, and Scott County. Some of these numbers are going to shock you when I bring them to you, because these are population changes. And we talk about issues in government. We talk about cash flows and tax dollars and revenues, but in reality, it comes down to simple numbers such as population changes. This is the population change for contiguous counties from 2000 to 2010. You'll notice that Frankfurt did grow. Franklin County, 3.4% growth, but when you start looking at our other communities, Scott County grew 42.7%. Woodford, 7.5. Anderson, 12.1. Shelby, 12.6. But then we have two counties that are growing very similar to us. It's Owen and Henry. When we look at the Kentucky average for these, you'll see this at the bottom of this, you also notice that we're not keeping up with the Kentucky average. When we start looking at changes to non-farm employment, Franklin County is down 12.5%, and you'll notice some of our neighbors are also down. And we'd say a lot of that is driven by state government. The retraction of state government jobs are having an adverse effect on our economy and also on our tax revenues coming in. The average shrinkage there was 1.8%. We're at 12.5%. So it should be an alarming number to you all. Go ahead, Tony. This is probably the most telltale sign that I can show you. This is population changes for our population under the 18 years of age. Why is this number so important to the Census track? This is what's deemed the family indicator. When you start seeing this number go down, this is very adverse to future revenues coming in from a state government or city government perspective. So when we start looking at this population change, we see it's a 1% reduction for Franklin County. Let's look at what Scott County is doing. It's 45.9. Shelby, 24.5. Everybody is growing there. The only one that's not on that same path is Owen County. So Franklin County and Owen County are growing roughly at the same pace or the same contraction. So you can kind of say Frankfurt and Owentown are on the same path right now. Let's go to the next slide. Let's look at the city. We don't just want to look at county statistics. Let's look at the city statistics. Georgetown, 60.9% growth. Shelby County, 39.3%. For sales, 14.1. Frankfurt, negative 1.6. And you know, there was some question about the census data coming out that it may not have included all the neighborhoods, so we went ahead and used the city's number, the census tracks data. This is the city number, and we still show that contraction. Go ahead, Tony. Well, we break that down into numbers. What does that mean? That means Frankfurt lost 400 residents over a 10-year period. Georgetown grew in that same timeframe by 11,000. Those are numbers that should be hitting home with our community, because it's showing a telltale sign going forward that we're going to have to make some changes in our community. Go ahead, Tony. Dying community. U.S. Census actually defines a dying community. It's a community whose under-18 population grows at a slower rate than average and whose 65 and older population is growing faster than average. Franklin County, I hate to say, we're a dying community. Our persons under 18 are less than the Kentucky average. Our persons over 65 are greater than the Kentucky average. Have I got your attention yet? Okay. Give you a little bit more information. Commuting patterns. This is one of the most unique stats that I can give you on Franklin County. Franklin County has a lot of employment that is for residents outside of our community. We have, on a daily basis, almost 15,000 people that drive into our community. Now, that's great from an occupational tax standpoint. You know, you're getting dollars, and they're not really living here. The problem is, you have to build your infrastructure to support those people. So every day, we have those almost 15,000 people. They're driving on your roads. They're using your sewers. They're using your water. They're adding to the cost of ownership to be in this community. Yet, in the end, they're only paying occupational taxes and not property tax and some of the other items that residents would pay. So what do we take from that? We know that Frankfurt, Franklin County are growing slower than our contiguous counties, except Henry and Owen. It's good counties there. Migration of families leaving Frankfurt, Franklin County is exhibited by that population of under 17 and under that are decreasing. We also know state government employment is in decline. Do we think it's ever going to be up to the levels it was? Probably not in my lifetime. We also know business expansion and relocations are directly tied to an available workforce and a quality of life, two things that are suffering according to these numbers. In addition, obesity rates are growing like waistlines in the United States. Industries and governments are trying to encourage their employees to begin an exercise regimen to help lower the healthcare costs. School systems are trying to get kids back to playing games instead of playing virtual What we're looking for is Swim Play Frankfurt to feel a community need. We think Franklin, Franklin County are missing a golden opportunity here. What we're asking to do is Swim Play Frankfurt to work cooperatively with the city. We want to work with Parks and Recreation and Historic Sites Group. We want to work with the Franklin County Parks as well as Frankfurt YMCA. This needs to be a community-wide effort. We know that our existing sports facilities are near their end of useful life. If you've been to Juniper Hill Pool lately, you'll know that what I'm talking about. Many of the Franklin, Franklin County residents are forced to travel out of town to participate in activities associated with youth sports. I can tell you, five days a week, I'm driving to Versailles for activities. I see a lot of you in this room on that road. When we are talking about Swim Play Frankfurt, what we want to do, we want to build an indoor facility that will enable Frankfurt, Franklin County to offer opportunities to participate and host events around the following sports: swimming, basketball, volleyball, archery, tennis, and soccer. And you could throw 10 other sports on there as well, because we want this building to be a flexible building. It also needs to have an outdoor water park and outdoor sand volleyball courts. Who's going to use it? Of course, the citizens are going to use it. But there's also club sports teams and school sports teams. We've got city parks programs. We've got county parks programs, YMCA programs, public schools, independent schools, corporations, even KSH. What we're suggesting is, this should be run by a nonprofit corporation. They should build it and operate it. This nonprofit corporation should have a five-member board. These are just suggestions, but we think this solves some of the issues that have hampered these efforts in the past. Have that member or those board members be Franklin County, the city, the school systems, YMCA, but here's a different one: the development corporation. Why wouldn't you have your guys tied to economic development be a part of this? Because this is a great lure from an economic development standpoint to get companies and people to realize Franklin County is a great place to live. We would suggest that they also serve for three years. The attributes, we've kind of already gone over that, but what we want to do is build a building with proper scale. If you do not build it with proper scale, you're not helping the situation. You must build it in the way that people want to come to our community for events. The next thing you know, they realize how great your community is. That's one of those things that's going to get people to think about relocating to Franklin County. Go ahead. We also talked about that water park. How many times this summer are people going to be driving to Versailles or Shelby to go to a water park, because they don't have a zero-entry pool for the little kids here? Go ahead, Tony. We also think a facility should be located less than five miles from I-64. Why? Because we want to bring in people from outside of our community to use this. That's one of the best ways to pay for something. Have somebody outside your community to pay for. By having these types of events, you're going to spur the tax revenues from when they're at an all-day soccer tournament or an all-day archery tournament. What are they going to do for lunch? I can tell you, they're going to eat in Frankfurt. Where are they going to stay if it's a weekend-long tournament? They're going to stay in Frankfurt. Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, has built a huge complex for sports. Three weeks ago, they had a baseball tournament there. They had representatives from 48 states stay there, along with three countries. Now, I'll ask you a quick question. How long do you think they had to stay there for that baseball tournament? They were there for two weeks. Two weeks. So let's think about that. You've got 48 teams from the states represented and three foreign countries. Where do you think they stayed? I'll give you a hint. Some hotel rooms are pretty hard to find at that time of year in Etowah. Where do you think they're eating at? I guarantee you, you're not going to be able to stay at your... Or be able to eat at your favorite restaurant that week, because they're going to be making tax dollars off somebody else. Go ahead, Tony. When we talk about something grand in scale, we do mean something grand. It's $25 million. And how do we think you should pay for this? We think General Assembly should pony up and help with this, and we'll get into that a little bit more. But we think local government has to be there as well. It's one of those things to truly appreciate something in life, you've got to have some skin in the game. Now, how much skin can we afford? Members, I know, we don't have a whole lot of skin, but what we are wanting to do is put forth the effort to show this as a cooperative relationship. We also want to pursue federal grants, donations from corporations, and facility grants from USA Swimming, Easton Archery, and some others. We've been working with QK4. QK4 is a large engineering firm, and what they do is, they actually do work similar to the bridges that are going up in Louisville. They said, "You know, this is such a great idea. We're going to donate some architectural work and help get you... Get your idea, some plans, so people can start understanding the size of this." It's 300,000 square feet under roof. It's a huge facility. But what we did was, we worked with QK4 after we talked to USA Swimming and found out what needed to be a component of it for a large-scale swimming. We also talked to USTA. Rob, you noticed, there's five tennis courts up there, isn't it? It's because we want to host USTA tennis events. We also want to have USA volleyball and USA soccer be a part of this. Let's start hosting regional events. You have to get their input at the beginning for that truly to come forward. We also want to build this to the highest standards of green buildings to reduce energy consumption as well as those operating costs. Geothermal for a swimming pool even. We've been working with the University of Louisville on that technology, and they think that's something that can really be beneficial and save a lot of dollars on the ongoing maintenance. We've also talked to AECom. AECom is one of the foremost agencies that looks at impacts associated with sports complexes. They're currently working on the new NBA arena in San Francisco. They have consulted 20 different major league sports teams in the last five years, so they know what they're talking about. They have generated these impacts to come up with what the one-time construction impacts would be, but also the annual recurring operations and the visitor spending impacts. Go ahead, Tony. So let's just talk about the construction side. $25 million, a whole lot of dollars, but look at what it does to your community. We take that $25 million, and you look at the direct impact, of course, it's $25 million. The indirect, though, is $6.78 million. The induced is $8.75 million. So in total, just building a complex brings $40 million to your community. That brings 390 construction jobs paying out about $15 million in wages. What's that do to our occupational tax roots? Helps a lot. We also talked about the annual operations. We talked about the direct costs, $17.3 million. Indirect, $6.2. Induced, $6.2. Annually, this would have a $30 million impact on our community. That's 530 full-time jobs, not associated with this park, but created as a result of those dollars being in our community. And those would pay an additional $11 million in wages. Once again, occupational taxes. Our total impacts for this, after three years, we're talking $131 million. A 10-year is $385 million. The 20-year is $697 million. So how much do we think it's going to cost? Remember, we're talking about an elephant. Whenever you're talking about having an elephant, you've got to feed it, but you also got to clean up after it. And our Parks Department can tell. It costs money to run centers like this. We're estimating, though, this one's going to cost about $1.5 million a year. And that's based on some of those discussions we've had with QK4 and also with some other consultants. How do we pay for it? It's also going to be user fees and corporate and individual rentals and annual agreements with agencies, but also advertising and sponsorships along with some concessions. We see agreements need to be entered into. So everybody has a set amount that they're going to pay for the facility. So that way, after year 10, people can't back out and say, you know, we liked it for the first 10 years, but now we want to get out. No, we want to have agreements there. And the annual payment would be the only amount paid by that agency for the use of the facility for the year. And those agencies would also have priority over scheduling a facility. These are some of the opportunities. We won't go through all that because I know you've got other pressing issues to talk about tonight. Go ahead, Tony. But I do want to let you know that there's a lot of supporters out there. I don't know if you've gone to our website, but if you have, you're one of the 50,000 people that have gone there. The funny thing is, we haven't advertised this website, yet we get more traffic than most business websites. It's amazing how word of mouth has helped this. We have over 200 positive comments, and I invite you to go onto our website and see what your neighbors are saying about this. This is something that people are getting behind. If you're a Facebooker, we've got over 500 likes. We've got 1,000 comments. And over 100,000 people have been reached by this. I can tell you, there's people, when you start looking at the comments, they come from all over the area. Let's look at our supporters. We've had a resolution or a letter of support from all of these organizations. You'll notice that we have the City of Frankfurt there because the last iteration of the commission passed a resolution supporting this effort. The county's on board. The capital belt corporation's on board. The schools are on board. We have all of those, and we can provide copies of those at any time. Let's go ahead and go through these. We don't need to talk about what the other communities have because they've got them and we don't. So here's the big question. I know everybody up there was thinking and everybody in the crowd, how do you pay for something like this? How can we afford this? We're Frankfurt. We're Franklin County. Rob, we don't have money sitting around there, do we? We have to work together with one voice for Franklin County. So we do have a game plan, believe it or not. Let's go, Tony. This map is the most shocking map that I can give you. If you can see the orange, that is property that is exempt from taxation in our community. We're the only one in the state that has this issue. Other state capitals refer to this as a capital tax. They actually ask state government to make up that difference. Franklin County, guess what? We don't do that. We have over $1 billion of property in our community that is not taxed for property tax purposes. That's one in every $3 of assessed value in our community. It's actually going to be greater because we talked with the PVA's office. Patsy Conway says she's got to go back and reassess a lot of these state buildings. So in the next iteration, it'll actually be higher than that, but it's $1 billion. Go ahead, Tony. So what's that mean? A billion dollars? It means that you're losing in property tax every year $2 million. Franklin County is losing $3 million. That's $5.2 million annually. Currently, thank goodness, we had a governor from Franklin County. When Julian Carroll was in place, he was able to put aside $195,000 annually from the state. Those dollars are supposed to offset the lost dollars from that property. I think they're a little undersold on that. But also, the cost of fire and emergency services for all these state-owned buildings. We've got to pay for that. $195,000 doesn't. I can tell you who's paying for it. It's coming out of your budget every year. $25 million bond, let's talk about it in something we can choose. When you go out and buy your house, you don't pay for it in one year. We don't need to talk $25 million. We need to look at, see what it would actually cost us. A 30-year bond with a 3% rate, it's $1.2 million annually. 20-year bond, 3% rate, $1.6 million annually. Now, do I have your attention? It's something we can do if we work together. So what we suggest is seeking funding through the state budget for an annual payment of $2 million earmarked for the project. The time is now. We have got to get our community speaking with one voice. The budget cycle is coming this January. If we do not have our priorities in order, this will not be on that budget. We need your efforts along with our county efforts, along with our state reps and state senator to get this on the budget table during the discussions. And we see that money going forward to be used for the debt service upkeep and the costs associated with it. That concludes our presentation, and I will answer any questions you have, but go ahead.
Commissioner Henn.
I have questions. How much land do you need?
You know, one thing that we've often discussed is we do not want this to be landlocked because Tony and I have been talking, you know, this is a great success. We probably want to expand it. Or maybe we want to add outdoor facilities right beside it. So I would say, right now, you have to have 30 acres. But I think you're going to have to have something bigger for a growth potential.
The building alone potentially is six acres under roof.
The building alone, six?
Yeah, that's just the building. We're talking 43,000 square feet to an acre, roughly, give or take. And you're talking 600,000 square feet. You're close to 40,000 square feet, close to six acres from 40,000 square feet. And that's not, that's not, it has to be big enough to be a scale that makes it economically feasible to support itself. You can do pieces parts, and that's why we've talked, we're kind of talking about a one-shot deal. If we do it in pieces parts, it'll never be self-sustaining. You've got to do like E-Town, where you draw in that other activity from outside the community to help offset your cost and your investment. And if you don't get to the scale where you can do that, then you really leave the burden on your local residents, and it will never be, it won't be the kind of success I think we're looking for here.
Because what we're looking at is a great event, an event that reinvents our community. And we think this is the one that should be.
We're kind of referring to this, many of you, I work with an organization called Technology Science and Technology Corporation, and they, they're a technology organization. They do a lot of things. And they've done some demographic studies on the per capita income on the state as a whole.
Tony, do you mind going now?
No, I'm sorry.
I'm afraid we're not going to get that on the record. And then I think we-
I have some more questions.
Commissioner Henn has some more questions, and then we'll get through if you can-
Real quick. The point I'm trying, we're trying to make here is if we don't have what is referred to as a breakthrough event, if we continue doing what we've done in the past, we're going to continue getting what we've got. And I guess this is, we're looking at this as a breakthrough event that will kind of jumpstart that development in terms of quality of life, which is what we're looking for.
Exactly right. You're exactly right. One thing I would like to know is that E-Town is not a second-class city of which the City of Frankfurt is, of which that they are allowed to do, I believe it's called a recreational tax, of which second-class cities are not allowed to do, which this is a law I really think needs to be changed. But you guys are exactly right. I mean, we can't afford not to do something like this. And the biggest risk of all is not taking it. I don't, I mean, I don't know how much time you guys need. I mean, the budget's coming up in January. I fully support you guys in trying to get this done. I mean, the worst thing that happens is they say yes, and then we really have to do it, right?
Yeah, really. Well, we're working, we understand the budget cycle, and I've been doing this for a little while now and working with legislature. And we've already talked with our state reps. We talked with them last session. We've already talked with the state budget director. You know, we've got those relationships, and we've got the opportunity to meet and talk with them. What we need to have and be able to say when we talk with them is we have a cohesive agreement in the community from the city government, from county government, from other development, the development corporation, the chamber, the tourism. It eliminates any possibility of saying, well, when you guys can agree on what you want to do, we'll work with you. We want to be able to go to them and say, we have that agreement. Now, we're asking for your commitment because we need that.
And it comes back to our state motto, united we stand, divided we fall. If we do not work on this together, we will never have a project like this.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm sorry. I guess in the end, I know you don't want to be landlocked, but sometimes we can't always financially give money, but we do have land, which is something the city has. I mean, I know the county has some as well. And I don't know what all you guys are asking for besides just giving a presentation, besides support.
You know, I think the key thing is we have to get the discussion going. Tony and I often say that decisions do not need to be made by us. It needs to be made by you all. And it needs to be made in concert with our county.
We would encourage you, to the extent you feel comfortable, talking to our state legislators either collectively or individually about your support for something like this so they know that it's broader than just a couple of guys out there, you know, trying to make this happen. Our job here, and please understand, we want to hand this off. This is not something we want to carry. This is not something we can carry, and we understand that. We just need to get it to the next level so somebody else can run with the ball. We just, we're trying to tee it up, if you will, to that level where we can make that next step. And that's why we're making a presentation to you guys. We've done it to the county fiscal court. We're going to continue making presentations to as many organizations as we can. I told Judge Collins in the fiscal court the other day, we may not necessarily be successful this time, but we're damn persistent. And so, you know, we're not going to go away. So that's kind of our message is we'll be back.
And I think, you know, when you start looking at the statistics that we brought, I'm scared of that next census. If we don't do something to change our community, our growth and our trends are alarming, and they should have your all's attention.
We'd rather see a broad base paying taxes than a narrow base paying high rates. That's kind of what our message is here. We're trying to broaden that base. That's our, that's our message.
All right. Any other commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Henn?
You noticed, you mentioned that you needed at least 30 acres, I believe. And I know we have a lot of land. Do you have like about three different areas that are possibilities?
You know, we've looked at areas, but once again, that's beyond our scope. Our scope is to get the issue before you and for us to raise issues. Ultimately, I think it needs to be, as we said, a suggestion. It needs to be close to 64. We don't need it as far away from 64 because nobody will come from other communities. We need it to be, you know, one of the things I always say, it'd be great if we could see it from 64. So when people are driving by our community, they see the first exit, and then they see this grand building on the horizon, they're going to stop at that second one to figure out what they just passed.
Well, our experiences, my experience in these kind of programs and projects is you look to a company like AECOM that we've already talked to who has done this in other communities. These people do market analysis, like McDonald's or someplace is going to go in at a new interchange on Interstate. They do the market analysis to figure out, is it worth making that investment in that location? Will they get a return on that capital investment? And that's what we would go to those folks. They would do that analysis, much like QK4 has done in terms of their experience is